December 3, 2024 Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Glenda Gibson, would you please give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Dear God, we gather here this evening with grateful and thankful hearts for the many blessings you bestow upon us each day. We are forever thankful for our dedicated teachers, staff, eager students, and supportive families that make up Stanley County Schools. And I ask, Lord, that you bless each one beyond measure. Tonight we come before you, Lord, as a new board with a new member where many of us will be sharing and working together in new roles on this board. Grant us the ability to lead with humility, compassion, and fairness, always keeping the best interest of our students and staff at the forefront of our minds and decisions that are made. As we enter into this Christmas season, may we never forget the true meaning and the greatest gift of all, the birth of baby Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next, we'll move to the Board Member oath of office. Mark Lauder will perform the swearing of the new members, and we're going to do each member individually.
We'll start with our newest member, Megan Allman. Come on down. Yeah, whoever you want to have bring up. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. You want somebody to hold it for you? There are three affirmations.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you, God?
I will.
Do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you, God?
I will.
Do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of the Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you, God?
I will.
Thank you. You'll come over here and sign this. Right there. And you'll get a copy of this.
Okay.
You'll get the original, actually. Thank you. That's it.
That's it? Thank you very much.
Where do you want them for pictures? Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. There you go. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you, God?
I will.
Do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you, God?
I will.
Do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of the Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you, God?
I will.
Thank you. Come over here. Do you have your craft?
They're in a babysit.
Oh, all right. So left hand, just hold it with your left hand, raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you, God?
I do.
Do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you, God?
I will.
Do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of the Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you, God?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got your favorite Bible? Okay. Put your left hand on your Bible, raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you, God?
I do.
Do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you, God?
I do.
Do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of the Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you, God?
I will.
Thank you. Hold it. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you, God?
I will.
Do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you, God?
I will.
Do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of the Stanley County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you, God?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Here's your picture.
Let her sign this.
Okay.
There you go. That I believe is the end of the oaths.
Thank you, Mr. Lauder. All right, next we will have, on the election process, the election of the chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. Nominations are now open for chairperson of the SCS Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
Dr. Dennis, I would like to nominate Ms. Robin Whitaker as the chairman of the Board of Education, chairwoman.
I have a nomination for Robin Whitaker. Do I have any other nominations? If I have no more nominations, I need a motion to close the nominations.
I move to close nominations.
I have a motion to close by Mr. Bill Sorensen. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Carla Poplin. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. All in favor of Robin Whitaker for chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I have none opposed. Congratulations, Ms. Whitaker. You are chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. I'm now going to start with the nominations for vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. The nominations are open. Do I have any nominees?
Dr. Dennis, I'd like to nominate Dustin Lisk, please.
I have a nomination for Mr. Dustin Lisk. Do I have any other nominations? So do I have a motion to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
I have a motion to close by Ms. Glenda Gibson. Glenda Gibson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Carla Poplin. All in favor of Mr. Dustin Lisk for vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I have none opposed. Congratulations, Mr. Lisk. You are the vice chairperson of Stanley County Schools Board of Education. Yeah, we are.
Good evening, Board. Each month, Stanley County Schools selects two stellar certified and classified employees to recognize and celebrate as Stanley Stars. This month, we have selected six total, three certified and three classified. At, when I call your name, if you'll please come up front to receive your certificate from Dr. Dennis, and then if you'll please wait, we're going to take a group picture, and the board would like to shake your hand following the picture. I'd like to call from West Stanley Middle School, Ms. Martina Bondurant, to the front. Ms. Bondurant is an exceptional educator who has built strong, positive relationships with staff, students, and parents alike. She fosters a warm and supportive environment while upholding high expectations, consistently going above and beyond in every aspect of her role. Her outstanding teaching skills in the classroom are matched by her remarkable leadership as she mentors colleagues and serves as the lead mentor at West Stanley Middle School, embodying true leadership. Beyond the E.C. department, staff members throughout the school regularly seek her guidance, a testament to the trust and respect she has earned across the board. She dedicates her time and energy to enriching the school community and has made a lasting impact on the quality of education for exceptional children. Constantly seeking innovative approaches, Ms. Bondurant ensures that our E.C. program continually evolves to provide the highest quality education to our students. We appreciate all that she does for West Stanley Middle School and Stanley County Schools. If you'll please give her a round of applause. We would also like to recognize this evening, Mr. Crafton Mansfield. He was not able to join us, but he serves in his first year at West Stanley Middle School as an E.C. Resource Teacher Assistant. Next, I'd like to call from Stanfield, SRO Zachary Caldwell. Officer Caldwell goes above and beyond to keep our schools safe. He has created procedures and initiatives to identify safety concerns within the community that could affect the school and created processes to ensure student and staff safety each day. If you are driving around Stanfield, you may see him walking around the school perimeter throughout the day, getting his 15,000 steps easily. In addition to keeping the school safe, he leads the school's safety patrol and co-chairs the school's flag patrol. You can see him interacting with students on the playground or greeting families in the mornings. He also volunteers to coach flag football for the students through the West Stanley Youth Football Program. He has been an amazing addition to Stanfield Elementary, and they are so glad to have him. Please give him a round of applause. Also from Stanfield, we would like to recognize certified staff member Sabrina Healy. She was not able to join us this evening, but she is a beginning teacher, and she teaches E.C. at Stanfield. From Stanley STEM Early College, we would like to recognize Christina Hyatt. Ms. Hyatt, if you'll join us up front. Ms. Hyatt teaches English I and II and has worked at STEM since it opened five years ago. She was an Albemarle English teacher prior to that. She has always worked in the Albemarle High School building. Ms. Hyatt is an excellent teacher. She cares a lot about the academic and civic education of our students. She consistently grows her students, and last year, her students had above 95% proficiency on the English II EOC. She is a great coworker who is willing to help at any time, always willing to go wherever and whenever it is needed. She is always there to help all students. This year, Ms. Hyatt took on morning duty in the cafeteria to ensure that students partake in the free breakfast that is offered, and she always walks during lunch speaking with students to get to know them both in and outside of her classroom. Last year, she worked with an ESL student before and after school throughout the year, which led to massive growth on the access test, and that student is currently an A/B student at STEM Early College. Mrs. Hyatt is a passionate educator dedicated to moving her students forward, and we are very thankful she is a member of Stanley County Schools. Last but certainly not least, I would like to invite Karen Sides to join us up front. For the past two years, Ms. Sides has served STEM Early College as an assistant. She is able to float in and out of classrooms to provide students with a familiar face. Through her daily work at the school's entrance, she greets each student with a smile and kind words. She has built a positive rapport with many of our students and is often the first face they see in the morning. Ms. Sides drives for field trips and will shuttle students over to the college for their classes. She is always pleasant and is a positive reflection of STEM Early College and Stanley County Schools. Please give Ms. Karen Sides a round of applause. Well, I think Ms. Healy is going to take a group picture, and then we'll ask that you allow the board to congratulate you. Okay, and then if you'll just walk right across the front.
We could ask you to just walk down and let us congratulate you.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you so much to all of you that were recognized. We appreciate all that you do for our school system. Next on our agenda is Board Member Years of Service Resolution, and I'll recognize Dr. Dennis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have a resolution to read on behalf of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, and this is for Dr. Rufus Lefler and his service. It begins, "Whereas Rufus Lefler has served with dedication and distinction as a member of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education from December of 2020 to December of 2024, and whereas during his tenure, Rufus Lefler has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the students, family, and staff of Stanley County Schools, consistently advocating for the academic success, well-being, and development of all students, and whereas Rufus Lefler has actively contributed to the development and implementation of policies and programs that have enhanced educational opportunities, supported diverse learners, and promoted a positive and inclusive school culture, and whereas through his leadership, Rufus Lefler has been a valuable voice on matters of educational governance, financial responsibility, and strategic planning, helping to guide the district toward its mission of providing high-quality education to all students, and whereas Rufus Lefler has consistently shown respect for the opinions of others, worked collaboratively with fellow board members, and supported district leadership in advancing the goals of Stanley County Schools, and whereas the commitment, expertise, and vision of Rufus Lefler have made a lasting impact on the direction of Stanley County Schools benefiting not only current students but generations to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Stanley County Schools Board of Education on behalf of students, parents, staff, and community hereby express its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Rufus Lefler for his dedicated service, leadership, and tireless effort on behalf of Stanley County Schools. Be it further resolved that this copy of resolution be presented to Rufus Lefler as a token of our appreciation for his invaluable service, and he cannot be here tonight. Thank you."
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. We do want to say thank you to Dr. Lefler. He has definitely been an asset to this board and will definitely be missed, and hopefully maybe he can join us at one of our other meetings later on. That would be awesome to be able to have him come back, so we appreciate you putting that together for us. Next on our agenda will be closed session. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A6. Student matters, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A1. Attorney-client matters, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3. And school improvement plans, North Carolina General Statute 115C, 105 dot 23. Do I have a motion? We go into closed session.
Make a motion, we go into closed session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consider yourself in closed session. Consider yourself in closed session. Okay, I'll call us back into open session. The next thing on our agenda is public comments, and we did not have anyone to sign up to speak tonight, so we will move on to the consent agenda. You have your minutes there from November 5th, 2024, board meeting, and I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve by Ms... My line's gone blank there for me.
Ms. Poplin.
Poplin.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? We'll move on to committee reports. The first thing on our agenda is facilities. I did chair the facilities, so we did have a meeting on November the 6th. You'll see the minutes there for you to look at. I did want to tell you that we had Eli Williams to come and do a presentation to us for that meeting. Eli is John Williams' son, and he basically wanted to apply for a grant where he would come and do some painting at the old, at Central School, the ball field that's there. He did provide some pictures for us. They were not anything that's set in stone, but it was kind of just to give us an idea of what he was thinking about doing. One of the things is that he wants to do some type of mural or writing on the backside of the concrete wall that faces Montgomery Avenue where the bleachers are. He did send me a text last week letting me know that he did receive that grant. It is a $3,000 grant, so we are very excited that he is willing to do that. He will be coming back to the facility committee. We will, that committee will meet again on the 19th at 8 o'clock that morning, and he will bring some additional drawings, some things for you to be able to finalize at that time. Next, we move on to finance with Mr. Dustin Leisk.
We did meet on November the 21st as a committee, mainly just to discuss the budget resolution. The board will, I believe, have to take action on that, Mr. Duttony. So normal resolutions that you see as monies come in from the state and from federal grants, eser what is left of that, we have to marry those up on the resolution. We did spend some time talking about the audit coming up, Mr. Deal. I won't steal his thunder. It was a very good audit, and he'll present that to you, but we'll have action. Do you want to speak on the budget resolution, Mr. Duttony?
I can. And we, like I said, send your board docs what was actually presented to the finance committee for your full board approval. Just to give you a heads up, you know, this is a formal format that pretty much a lot of the school systems use. And just to give you a little idea, each page breaks down each different fund that we receive. Our total beginning budget that we're starting with is $114 million. That's all those funds added up, so if there's any questions, I'll be glad to elaborate on them if you have any questions on that.
Any questions? Do any board members have any questions for Mr. Duttony?
And this was approved.
Madam Chairwoman, since that came out of committee, you just need a second, correct? A second.
All right. All in favor? Say aye. Those against? Most passes. Instructional Committee, Ms. Glenda Gibson.
The Instructional Committee met yesterday, and it was a very informative meeting. We listened to presentations on the school improvement plans from five of our schools or six. We had East Albemarle, we had Albemarle Middle, North Stanley Middle, South Stanley Middle, and Albemarle High School. And I'm not going to elaborate on this because I know that in a few minutes with curriculum instruction that Mr. Lynn Plummer is going to highlight some things for us. But one thing that was said in that meeting by our principals that were there was how much they appreciated the visits from our board members and that their teachers appreciated this too. Because I asked, you know, I wanted them to know, we support them so much, and how can we support them even more? And they said, "Your support is when we see you there, and we're so appreciative of that." And I know Mr. Sorenson, and I said, you know, "We love going into our schools," and we certainly, with hearing that from them, because they love how we engage when we're there, and it's not that we just stand back. We engage when we're there." And they just said they love when we come. So I wanted to point that out to you, the school improvement plans that they presented to us, you have that. You've been able to see that, and again, I know that Mr. Plummer will elaborate on some things for us. The other thing that, of course, we went into closed session about dealt with safety, but I am going to ask Ms. Jennifer Flo, Hogan? I'm sorry. Ms. Jennifer Hogan? Hope I can remember to always say that. To come forward, just to highlight some of the things that we have done and future things a little bit here with safety for us, just to enlighten the board. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. As you said, there's a lot of things that we can't discuss in open session. However, I do want to highlight some of the areas that we are working on to improve safety across our district. One is the School Resource Officers Grant. We have applied for that. We are still waiting on a response from that, but we currently have SROs in all of our elementary, middle, and high schools, and that is something that we've worked really hard on to achieve over the past few years, and I'm very thankful for that. We have a great group of ladies and gentlemen that serve as our school resource officers that protect our students and staff every day. We do have probation officers that are still making their weekly checks, so they come onto campus and they coordinate with the administrators and SROs to ensure safety walks are done as well through them. Another grant that we are currently waiting on is the school safety grant. That was for different types of equipment, so we are waiting to hear back on that grant as well. So we've got two that we're waiting to hear back from. Other than that, the school safety plans and the school risk management plans are in place for all of the schools. They are reviewed monthly or weekly, however often the schools have their safety plan meetings. They meet and they discuss, and they tweak and make revisions for their plans however they need to. Students and staff participate in the drills for the different types of emergencies. Some of those are monthly, some of those are quarterly. It just depends on the drill. They are also engaged in tabletop exercises with their safety teams, their staff members, and their school resource officers, where they work to prepare for different types of emergencies. And we've been working to practice on-site and off-site reunification plans. So we have strategically worked with emergency management and law enforcement to have some off-site reunification sites available that we can evacuate to if needed. So those are things that we continue to work on. To highlight one other area would be the weapons detections and metal detectors. We've had the metal detectors in our schools for a couple of years now, but in the past year, we've added the weapons detection to the high schools. They are using the weapons detection at some of their athletic events, and then we are starting to incorporate it into some of the arrivals on campus. It is trying to be random and daily as well, but that is working through some things to make that happen, but all the high schools are working on that. The middle schools have metal detectors, and they are using those for the athletic events, and then dances and other things as deemed necessary by the SRO and administration on campus.
I just want to add one thing as far as the weapons detection. They're easy to minister if you're at, maybe say Albemarle, where you have one school that's enclosed and you can really control your traffic flow, but when you have open campuses, which we know are very unsafe, like we'll say, West Stanley High School has three different buildings, it's hard to get all those people in the flow in because there's so many entrances. So we've taken a random approach at this juncture with the amount of weapons detection systems we have to try and mix up where on campus we're initiating those. Plus, it can also be intensive as far as the amount of personnel it takes to run these different devices.
But I will just give a shout out to all the administrators and SROs and even the staff that's on these campuses because I can tell they really take safety, you know, top-notch, and they will do whatever they can, switch things up, change, have their meetings to reflect the safety of their campuses. Any questions?
Just thank you for all of your work. I know grant writing is a hard job in itself, and we appreciate you taking the time to do those, and we are very appreciative of that. And also, we will probably, in the new year, schedule some new visits to our schools, and I know Ms. Almond would like to get out and visit some of our schools, and we also in this next round, I want us to be able to invite the commissioners to go with us, give them an opportunity to go into some of our facilities, and maybe have Mr. Benton along with us where he can point out some points of interest to them. So we'll try to schedule those in the new year. Next committee meeting is Personnel. That was Dr. Lefler. I know that they did not have a meeting this past month, so we'll move on to Policy with Ms. Vicky Watson.
I have no report.
Safety and Security, Mr. Sorenson.
Ms. Hugueney, covering everything that we're doing, I just wanted to give a shout out to her. She's tireless, and she's working long days and long weeks for our kids, and our schools are a lot safer because of her.
Next on our agenda is the report from Dr. Dennis from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Alignment.
Yes, I would like to invite Dr. Murray up. She's put together a little PowerPoint to help explain some things as far as the new alignment, the reason, what it can look like, because information's going to start coming out on this soon, since we'd have to get, well, we being the Athletic Association, and the schools have to get together the new conferences for next year.
Good evening, board members. I just put together a very brief PowerPoint explaining about the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Bylaw 6 that was adopted May 2023 at their annual meeting, and due to the increase in the number of member schools in the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, they have done a reclassification of the schools, so that way no class would have more than 64 schools per classification. So instead of 1A through 4A or 5A, there are now eight different classifications. Under Bylaw 6, I highlighted two specific areas on the PowerPoint that kind of go along with what you need to know if anybody asks about the classification. It was based on numbers provided to the state from our first month of school, number of students, the ADM, okay? So on the next slide, we had to report total number of ADM per school, and so we reported the ones that are attending each school as well as those that are at the early colleges that their residential area are those schools. For example, Albemarle High School was a total of 528, but it's based on the 414 that are currently at Albemarle High School and the 114 that are at the early colleges that should be attending Albemarle High School. So you can see those numbers that were reported. Those are the circled numbers. We were asked to report from each school system because of the transformation or the transition from power school to infinite campus. The High School Athletic Association cannot pull those numbers, so we reported them based on our 20-day count. And as you could see, Albemarle High School is now 2A with their final ADM of 528. North Stanley High School is 3A with 651. South Stanley High School is 2A with 501. West Stanley High School is 4A with 914. And on the very last slide, there is a link if you want to see where area schools might fall in the different classes. You can also see where our schools kind of fall. They all kind of fall in the middle of the classification, so there's no risk of moving anytime soon, but they will do this reclassification every four years. And so this is going to start next school year. It will last for four years, and then they will look at all the schools again and all the ADM and reclassify in another four years.
I think two things need to be said is, you know, we already have them. You're going to have some split conferences. You won't be able not to, not have to travel all over the place. And I know Ms. Almond and I were having a conversation, a lot of this is because of championships, and there's been a lot of, not a lot, there's been several though, and one recently that I read about, you have a school that may be 4A that only has 1,900, 2,000 kids, and the other school may have 3,400. And so there's a clear market advantage in the availability of number of athletes, and they're trying to do this. So now, when you may have this split conference, and just like now, when you go to your championships, you will only play schools within your classification for the championships, if that makes sense.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question, Dr. Dennis. Now, this is, this is going to be in place for the next school year.
That's correct. You should be seeing stuff coming out because they're going to have to go ahead and make these conferences, and I do not have any preliminary conferences at this juncture, so that they can go ahead and start scheduling games for next year, especially next fall's going to come fast, and they have to find what their championship venues are going to be because it's going to increase the number of venues they need available for championships.
And for some of our schools, they will be playing the same teams, same schools, but then they might also play different. Like, we're going to see a change in all of their, in all of the school, like Rocky River Conference, whatever. We're going to see a change in that, in schools that are now in that conference or whatever.
Yeah, the conference I can't predict right now, but as far as our schools, and they're playing each other or maybe playing a close rival, that can always be scheduled non-conference as well, if they weren't, if they happen not to be in the conference.
Any other questions? Next on the agenda is curriculum and instruction, school improvement plans, Mr. Lynn Plummer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Each year, school improvement teams develop school improvement plans to guide and monitor progress toward meeting goals and targets. These plans drive monthly conversations and receive feedback from the district curriculum department and state school improvement coaches. Principals of schools who are low-performing and/or receive comprehensive or targeted support presented their current school improvement plans to the instructional committee. These data-driven conversations focused on what schools are doing differently to best support student achievement and growth for the 2024-2025 school year. Among these strategies, schools discussed instructional resources, targeted intervention and tutoring, multi-tiered systems of support, professional development, and collaborative planning. School improvement plans are viewable on each school's website under the School Improvement Plan tab. I am asking tonight for your approval for the school improvement plans as developed and implemented by our school leaders, teachers, parents, and communities.
And if I might add, board members also, Mr. Sorenson was there in the meeting as well. It, you know, we used monies to purchase materials, to purchase Savas, I believe.
Correct.
The curriculum and the books, and I know Ms. Almond, you were, you know, very high on this, and I was too. All we heard in that meeting was positives yesterday from principals, that the teachers are seeing the value in it, they are working together, they're even finding more, like planning, you know, the planning time together. The students are learning, they're engaged in it, and it is highly rigorous. And I know we talked about it and they certainly are looking and hoping to get more into even more courses along the way. But, you know, we wanted to hear, we were waiting to hear, how's it going, how's it going to work in school? And now that we've been almost a semester, we are seeing the, I really think we're seeing the gains with this. And I'm very proud of that. And I thank you, Mr. Plummer and Ms. Raper, for, you know, the hard work that you've done in getting these materials, vetting these materials for our students. Mr. Sorenson, was there anything else in that that, you know, you could add from what we felt like they told us yesterday?
Just one real quick point. We have, we have real challenges in some of these schools. We have the best possible staffs and administrations in these schools. And people get, I know you cringe when I say this, but growth is what really counts. Growth is learning and learning is growth. So when we have these arbitrary, you know, test scores, the proficiency score, if I go out into Stanley County and I find 100 kids at the same age, take them to the swimming pool and teach them to swim, they're not all going to swim the same speed. Growth is getting all those kids to swim faster and better than they did. So I want to applaud those guys that came and talked to us. We are in, we're headed in the right direction and it's a testament to your work and Ms. Raper's work. It's also those folks at the, on the front lines, they're toeing a heavy load and I'm very proud of them.
Sure.
Madam Chairwoman, not a question, just a comment. I wasn't able to make the meeting yesterday, but I have been in some of the schools and I think teachers are very appreciative of the materials along with students. And it's fun to see them actually carrying a little book around or, you know, having their book, because the Chromebook is something that, coming from a tech family, like we have lots of gadgets, but I also love to see books back in kids' hands. And so I'm glad that we were able to get those resources and hopefully, as Ms. Gibson said, there will be more in the future. But thank you.
Thank you.
We do need Board approval for the school improvement plans that are presented. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the school improvement plans as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. Next, we'll move on to Finance Services for the 2324 Financial Audit.
Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well, well this evening. My name is Andy Deal. I'm a partner with the accounting firm Anderson Smith &amp; White. I'm here to present the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. So keep in mind, all the dollar amounts we're talking about tonight are as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2024, so last school year. This year, we've got a PowerPoint here where we've basically just taken all the important data from the 80-page report and just kind of summarized it in this PowerPoint. So we'll focus on this during the meeting. We'll go to the first slide. There are four audit reports or four audit opinions in these financial statements. The first audit opinion is on the financial statements and if they're in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. The other three audit reports all deal with compliance, like compliance with federal grants, compliance with state grants. Our first audit report deals with the financial statements and if they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We're pleased to report that this is an unmodified audit report. You could also call that a clean audit report. The reason we call it an unmodified audit report, that means we didn't note anything during our audit that would cause us to modify our audit report. So that's why it's called unmodified. When I say we didn't note anything, like an audit finding or something bad that would cause us to modify it. An unmodified audit report is the highest level of assurance we can issue on a set of financial statements. So that's great news for the school district. If you go to the next slide. On our next slide, we've got the governmental fund statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. You could call this an income statement or a profit and loss statement. So it's going to give you a pretty detailed look at all the revenues and expenses of the school district for all of the governmental funds. And all the governmental funds are going to be all the funds at the school district except for your child nutrition fund. The child nutrition fund has different accounting rules from the governmental funds, more similar to a for-profit company. So their financial statements are in a little different format and we'll talk about those later. But just want to focus on the first column here, that's the general fund. So for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024, if you look at the third number from the bottom, that is our net change in fund balance for the year. So for 2024, we had an increase in fund balance of $2.5 million, a little over 2.5 million, and our ending fund balance is a little over 4.9 million. Just from what we saw across the state for a district your size, that's a large increase in fund balance. So that's great news for the school district. Your ending fund balance, 4.9 million, that sounds like a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but for a district your size, I would say that's about average. One number I want to point out, if you look at the second column, that's your state public school fund, $69 million in revenues and expenses. If you had a 3% cut in your state revenues, 3%, that would be about $2.1 million. So you can see how just with a small cut, you could really chew through that 4.9 million in a hurry. So, you know, we're in great financial shape. Let's keep it that way and just do everything we can to maintain and grow that fund balance because what we're seeing across the state is districts are really struggling to maintain and keep their fund balance. We're seeing lots of districts lose fund balance and, you know, they're just getting to levels that if they lose any more, they're going to be worried about making payroll at the end of the month. You know, you guys are nowhere close to that, so let's keep it that way. The next slide is our balance sheet for the same governmental funds. So the balance sheet is one of the most important pages in the financial statements. This is going to give you a snapshot of the financial condition of the school district as of June 30th, 2024. So it's going to show you how much cash you have on June 30th. It's going to show you what your accounts payable balance is. And most importantly, it's going to show you what your fund balances are. So if you look at the first column, that's your general fund. The second number from the bottom is your total fund balance. So that's where you'll find the fund balance for each of the funds. If we go to the next slide, I mentioned earlier that the childcare, or the child nutrition fund has different accounting rules, more similar to a for-profit company. Due to these accounting rules, they are required to put liabilities for the state pension plan and the state retirement health plan on their books. These liabilities are massive liabilities calculated by an actuary at the state level and they divide them up amongst the districts based on size. Whenever you slap those liabilities on the balance sheet, it really muddies the water when you're trying to determine, did this program lose money? Did this program make money? You know, how are they doing financially? The thing I like to look at, the easiest way to tell, you know, how well the program's doing financially is to look at the change in cash. So here on this slide, we have the statement of cash flows and it's going to give you just a detailed look at the change in cash for the year. If you look at the third number from the bottom, we had a net increase in cash of $255,000 with ending cash being 3.2 million, a little over 3.2 million. Compared to districts your size, you guys are doing great, probably towards the top of the state as far as the increase in cash and your ending cash balance. Lots of districts are going 100% CEP and what that's doing is that is decreasing their USDA revenues. We've had state mandated minimum wage increases that hit, I think a couple of years ago. That really hit the child nutrition program really hard. Most of those employees are hourly paid employees, so it really pushed up the labor cost. We all go to the grocery store, food costs are crazy right now. So most of the districts across the state are losing cash in child nutrition, especially ones that are 100% CEP. Your district is 100% CEP starting this year. So, you know, you guys are in great shape. Again, let's just keep it that way and definitely something to keep an eye on since we're 100% CEP. So it might be a little harder to keep maintaining this cash balance going forward. But again, y'all are ready for it, you're in great shape and just, I only bring that up just because, you know, we're just seeing lots of districts going in the wrong direction as far as losing cash in the child nutrition program. Next, we'll talk about the three audit reports related to compliance. There are three audit reports. The first one is our report on internal control over compliance and internal control over financial reporting. We're pleased to report that that is an unmodified audit report with zero findings. The next audit report is our report on the district's compliance with the major federal programs. And again, that is an unmodified report with zero findings. And given the massive increase in federal funding due to COVID relief funding, the fact that we had no findings there is great news. Our last audit report is our report on the major state programs. And again, that is an unmodified report with zero findings. So all of our audit reports are unmodified, the cleanest reports you can get. So that's great news for the school district. Next, if we skip over two slides to the, yeah, right there. This is just a chart of our revenues for the past 10 years. You can really see in 2022 where the federal funding, that's the gray box where it starts getting bigger. So mainly, the increase in revenues for the past three years is our COVID relief funding. If we go to the next slide, here we've got a chart of the COVID relief funding for the past four years. So in 2020, it was about a half a million dollars. 2021, we're about $3 million, $4 million. 2022, 12 million. 2023, 6 million. 2024, a little over 6 million in COVID relief funding. That money will be next to nothing this year and going forward, zero. So just another reason we need to keep an eye on that fund balance to make sure we're maintaining that fund balance and trying to grow it because your fund balance, that is your financial stability. You know, if something comes up, that's what you have to fall back on. If you get cuts at the federal and state level, that's what you have to fall back on. If we'll go to the next chart, this is just our fund balance over time. And you can just see, back in 2015, we were struggling, you know, very, very low on fund balance. So, you know, we have done a great job over the past 10 years growing the fund balance. So again, that's, that's great news for the school district and, you know, let's keep it going in that direction.
What's your recommendation on where that fund balance should be?
It's honestly hard to put a number on. Some, some people would tell you 10% of your yearly expenditures, but I think that's about a month, month and a half worth of expenditures. You know, the more the merrier. I'm an accountant, I'm always going to tell you to save more money. But it's, it's really hard to just say, yep, 6 million is the number because you never know what's going to come up. For a district your size, I would say your average, maybe a little above average. But again, you know, 3% of state revenues is 2.1 million, you've got 4.9.
Some of that's already spoken for because we've got, like to your point, with the classified pay scale, the unfunded mandate coming down from the state, I think that's one, one, one and a half million dollars out of that.
1.3, yeah, 1.3.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So right, right at it.
And I think some of it, we're just able to play within the ESAR funding where we could use federal grants to cover certain things and allowed us an ability to build that fund balance. But I would fully expect some normalization.
Yeah.
Sort of back to some of your slides here, as that funding goes away.
For sure.
And some of these mandates coming down from the state, some of the expenses we've seen increase that that normalizes or reverts back to the mean a little bit.
You have some capital opportunities too that are going to be very expensive coming up that are not.
Yeah, and I think we got keys coming up.
That's correct. He'll discuss that.
Yeah, it's, you know, nobody can predict the future, but that's where if you have that, that fund balance, it's going to get you through tough times and for stuff that comes up. And I had a superintendent, they, they put it, the best way I've ever heard described it, you know, the COVID funds were kind of the contingency fund for the past three years. Like when stuff came up, most of the time it was COVID related and you could fall back on those funds. They're no longer there. So it's all going to fall back on that general fund fund balance. So I think it will be harder going forward, you know, to maintain that fund balance.
You've probably seen a lot of districts, I believe, and maybe not, that used a lot of that money for hiring from employment, whereas this district did not.
Yeah.
Found other ways to use that because that was going to be a future liability on the books that we wouldn't be able to fund.
Right.
So I think we've used it as wisely as the system could, given the rule set.
Yeah, and that's what we've seen from our viewpoint as well. You know, you can look at the fund balance chart and just kind of see it go up and, you know, districts that used it for positions, not only did their fund balance not go up, but, you know, they're having to make a lot of tough cuts and a lot of tough decisions this year because, you know, that money's going away and, you know, they don't have, you know, money to pay those positions. So, yeah, I mean, anytime you have those one-time grants, you know, I would always suggest just, you know, plan on it going away because it's going to go away. Yep. And then Terry, I do have a chart that'll also.
Let me just hand out this one, the retirement training? They've got it?
Okay. So you should have a one-page chart that shows you your retirement cost for the past five years. And keep, keep in mind, when you're looking at those retirement costs, that is the cost of the state pension plan and the state retirement health plan. So that, that is health insurance employees get when they retire. That does not include current health insurance. So you can look at, look at your covered employees for five years ago and your cost and then, you know, flash forward five years, your covered employees has gone down and your costs have almost doubled. Those retirement rates are set by Raleigh. Nobody in this room can control those rates, but we have to pay them. And not only do we have to pay them for state employees, you have to pay them for federal employees, local employees. And just because Raleigh increases the retirement rate, that doesn't mean Washington DC is going, oh, North Carolina increased the retirement rate, we got to give them more Title I funding. It doesn't work like that, you know? With your state dollar allotments, they don't increase those, but you have increased costs. So, you know, that, that chart right there, to me, really puts it in perspective on how hard it is to maintain that fund balance. I mean, that's.
That's a good chart because people can't see it. In the past just two years, we're down 30 employees and we're paying another about $2.5 million.
Yeah.
And it has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
And that's coming out of current local expense.
No matter how you shuffle it around.
You look at that fund balance, it's costs like this, it's costs like the classified pay scale that are coming through at a very fast pace.
Yeah. Same, same thing with state mandated, like wage increases. You know, just because the state increases the wages, doesn't mean you're getting more money from the county, doesn't mean you're getting more money from the federal government. So, yeah, like I said, it's, y'all are in great shape, but I've seen districts in great shape before and they go the wrong direction. You know, this was a similar time to like 2008, 2009, when we had the ARA funding. Saw a lot of districts grow their fund balance and then three years later had no fund balance. Let's not do that because it's a lot easier when you have the cushion. When you don't have the cushion, it's a lot harder. The last thing I'll go over, everybody should have a letter. I call this our Required Communications Letter. There's actually some technical, you know, name for it that's got a bunch of letters and numbers. But this is just, due to auditing standards, there are certain communications that we as auditors have to have with the board and they're found in this letter. The only paragraph I like to go over during the board meetings, the last paragraph on the first page, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management in performing and completing our audit. When we do a federal and state single audit, we are asking for a ton of documentation. It's not just finance, it's pretty much district-wide. When working on the audit of Stanley County's. When working on the audit of Stanley County schools, if we ask for documentation, we get all of the documentation, not half of it. We get it in a timely manner. I can tell Terry has looked at it before he's given it to us, which you would be surprised how many clients don't do that. So, basically, when, when we're doing an audit, if we're not having to pull teeth to do the audit, it just allows us to do a better, more effective audit. So, pleased to report we didn't have any difficulties and also, you know, it's great news that all the audit reports are clean opinions, clean reports. So, just, just want to thank Terry and his team for, for, you know, just getting us what we need and getting it to us in a timely manner to, to get the audit done. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
I noticed in your, the financial highlights that your company noted that we were operating on diminished resources at a, at a local level. And the rankings I saw today, the new rankings for year '23, '24 have come out and we've actually worsened.
Yeah.
At a local level, level gone down to 106. What are you seeing other districts do to compensate for that?
Being honest, what, what I'm seeing is districts are either losing fund balance because of just increased costs or, you know, the county is putting pressure on them to spend their fund balance. Some could argue it's a way for the county to have more control over the school district because the less fund balance you have, the more you got to run to the county. If something comes up, the more control they have over, you know, of the district. So, don't want to say that's why they're doing it. But, you know, that's the trend I'm seeing is, is, is just, most districts aren't getting more support, they're getting less support. And if they've gotten more support, they don't get it each and every year. You know, they'll get it for a few years, then fund balance grows and then they're told to spend the fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, you noted that we're, we're still ranking below the state average in total per pupil funding. And when you combine the federal and state, and again, this is as of the last school year, we're in the bottom 3% of all combined funding. And we're nearly last in, in local funding, although we're the 40th largest district.
It's in the 40s.
And have a taxing ability in the 50s.
Yeah.
So, I was just curious because we're, I feel like the, the finance department, the superintendent are doing everything that they can, but we have hundreds of millions of dollars worth of facility renovations and are trying to, you know, find ways to, to give the students what they need and the staff what they need to perform at a higher level.
Yeah, it, it's hard and, you know, I feel like there, there's more spent in more urban areas than, as far as per pupil, than, than rural areas. And that's not always the case, but, but in, in most cases, you know, if, if you don't have like a high supplemental tax that you're getting, it's, it's just hard to get that local support. I mean, it, it really is. And, you know, most of the districts, and especially smaller rural districts, are really, really struggling with, with, you know, per pupil funding and having fund balance. Yep.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Dale.
I'd like to make one comment though, based on what Andy was saying concerning the child nutrition program. You know, this was something that we implemented 100% CEP across the, across the county for this year. So, you know, our goal is to build participation as much as possible. Me and Ashley had a conversation briefly today about where we stand from November of 2024 versus November 2023. We are up, but then you're also, you're up in salaries, you're up in food costs as well. So, the more participation and the greater we build our participation, the better we are to, to offset those costs. So, that, that's a big thing to, to make sure, as Andy said, keep that line black, is to make sure our participation increases with CEP.
And it has been increasing every month thus far, this year.
And, and one thing I'll add to, y'all are in much better shape than 95% of my districts when you decided to go 100% CEP. I mean, most of the school districts I work with have decided to go that direction and 95% of them had way less cash than, than you had. So, that's, that's good news for the school district.
Madam Chair, just a comment. I just want to make sure that we continue marketing the CEP meals and that parents and students and staff understand that, how vital that is to our child nutrition systems. I just want to make sure we continue to do that. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Dutton, just thank you to you and your staff for the job that you do. We're, we're so very appreciative. Thank you, Mr. Dale. Next on our agenda is auxiliary services, Mr. Keith Benton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you about Board of Education. I'm going to bring to you real quick, briefly tonight, we received bids for West Stanley High School's gym roof renovation today. And we got them shoved in there real quick for y'all's approval. But there, there, there you can see we had six contractors that supplied us, brought a bid with us, to us. It is the recommendation of the engineering firm that the, which is in, in another, which is the letter from them, to go with, with Bard, let me see, make sure I'm right, Bar Roofing for $716,100. And that's going to need action on y'all's end.
That is from our engineer for the roof.
That is from Wood Trail Engineering Firm, which is the engineer firm that we've brought in to core drill the roof and give us their recommendation of replacement.
You want to describe a little more in detail the opportunity that the roof provides at West Stanley High School?
Yeah. So, what this is, is the, the roof has actually had an active leak for, for a while. And so, we've bored the roof, core drilled the roof, and what we, what we see is a cross-section of the roof. We see the materials as we've, we've added more to it, ripped, taken off, replaced or anything like that. So, we're taking off the existing roof that's there now that's actively leaking and we are replacing it with a better R-rating roof, better foam layer of insulation, which in turn gives you a better protection of your building one, but it also gives us an opportunity to condition the space a lot more efficient. And then you have tech, tech them panels that are on the interior of the roof that have worn out over its time. So, they, several of them is going to have to be replaced as well.
Did he say anything about to the age of the last part of the substrate of the roof?
As far as the, the, as far as the substrate of the roof, so you've got multiple layers there. You've got your foam rooftop and then you've got the, the foam insulation and then you have your metal deck and then you have the tech them deck that's right up under. So, we have penetrations all the way through to the tech them level, okay? So, there's some significant tear off that's going to have to take place where if you stay in a regiment of roof, maintaining them and rotating them out over time, then, then you don't have that multi-layer infiltration happening. Any other questions? Did I answer?
Which has been happening for decades.
It's been happening for a very long time. That one section of the roof did have a replacement on it and the company who came in actually bonded it to an existing roof section. And the, the bonding agency right there where they come together is a penetration. So, instead of doing the whole thing at one time, we only did portions of it and created more of a problem for us.
This is the part of the roof over the front office and auditorium.
This is from the front of the auditorium all the way to the backside of the gym. And if you go in that gym, if any of you have been in that gym lately, you see some of the peeling of the paint on the wall, that's, that's an immediate reaction of the, of the brick, of the block having moisture in it, which is coming from your roof issues.
Mr. Benton, I know we've talked in the past about foam roofs and the issues with this. Is this due to cost or is this, is this, I guess I'm questioning why we're going with the foam roof?
Well, in the past, this is not a foam roof. So, this is a PVC roof.
Okay.
So, we will bridge up the roof a little bit. So, we're going to add a little bit of crown to where the water actually sheds off of it and doesn't sit on a flat roof. Now, that percentage over a time, you can't visibly see it with your own eye because it's just a small percentage all the way across. But there has been foam roofs used multiple times. This is not a foam roof application. Foam roofs are significantly cheaper, but you do not have any life expectancy out, out of them at all.
And I think the issue too is years and years and years ago, it's easier just to lay a foam roof on top of an existing roof than it is to remove the roof. So, you have several, I don't know how many, different roofs.
Correct.
Roofs underneath.
There's almost seven layers is what we've seen in multiple of our cross-sections. At the time that the engineer firm was taking the core drills, every one of them that we cored was slammed full of water. We did about 12 sample ports and I, upon my recommendation, I said, please stop. Don't put no more penetrations. We've hit each corner of the building, so we know the saturation level is completely all the way across. There's no need in drilling anymore.
And I think another issue you have to look at as well is there's some structural issues that appear to be coming up because the immense weight the roof has on the building right now.
Correct.
And we're starting to see some masonry issues.
Right. I mean, you know, a foam roof is just a big foam sponge that you wash your dishes with every day. You know, you wash them, you see the foam gets saturated, you try to squeeze it out as best you can, you never can get it all the way out. Not only that, the weight of it, as it, over that span of a building, so you can imagine the amount of weight as that layers filled with water.
I think that was, excuse me. I think that was my question with what Dr. Dennis has just said. Now with the roof, what are we, what are we looking at with the walls and everything else from this? And because there's got to be some repair work with all of that.
Correct. So, what we're going to do is when we take the roof off and, and once we put the new roof off, you're, we're in hopes that the gym wall will dry out to where we can go back on it and paint it and it stop peeling off, okay? The gym wall's been painted multiple times, but it continues to flake off. So, that wall should, should dry out. Now, external of your building, on your brick veneerian, there's stress fractures in the walls around there. It could lead to the, the multi-years of foam layers being added to the roof. You would have to get somebody in, we would have to get somebody in to really look at that. And a structural engineer, not just an architectural firm.
What's the life expectancy of the new roof?
So, this year, this roof right here will have a 20-year roof, okay? So, looking down the road, we plan it as a 20-year roof. Well, year 16, 17, we look at it as a three-year outlook on a capital improvement that we go ahead and replace it year 20. And you do that to keep an active warranty on the roof because if you don't, like I said, the cost, of course, you can see right here where it'll get you. So, if you plan for multiple years, then you, then you know, you expect it and you don't have surprises like this.
And if we approve this bid tonight, what's a start date for that and what's the length of completion?
So, it's a 90-day completion was the low bid on them. There was multiple contractors there as well that had a 90-day. But, but, so we would actually start the roof probably to, towards the end of basketball season. We wouldn't want to open up the roof right now, one, but two, we can't get the materials here fast enough. Materials on roofing materials have sped up, but over the past years, they have been really behind and dragged getting on state side because some of the materials do come from overseas.
So, I know you said you want to wait till after basketball season, but while that work is going on, that gym will still be able to be utilized?
Will utilize the gym for, for PE classes of sort until we might get to a state that we have to see that we might not be able to have class in there, especially if we get into the tech them layer and the tech them layer is, is saturated and we need to replace it. There's going to be a window that we're going to try to target and hit during spring break to where we can lay down plastic all across the gym floor and pull the tech them deck down to replace the levels that, the panels that we need to. That's a target date that we have to hit and that's very short to hit it during that week.
Mr. Benton, how, how does this affect the HVAC system?
Well, I mean, the HVAC system there, I mean, it's R22 units, 20 years old. It, it might help it last a little longer. But sooner or later, we're going to have to replace the rooftop units there. There's already one been replaced in the past three years and the rest of the units are sitting up there, they're R22s. It's just a matter of time. We've changed compressors, we've done everything we can to long, keep the longevity of it.
You want to speak to the availability of R22 coolant?
So, R22 coolant is, so the last 30-pound cylinder we bought was right at $1,800 for 30 pounds. Now, R22 has been replaced many years ago by 410 refrigerant. Well, 410 refrigerant is being phased out now. So, as a district, we have 80 to 90, somewhere's in the upwards of 100 of R22 units still left in the district. So, we haven't even got to 410 yet. So, now we need to go, now the new is a butane base and so we, we're two refrigerant units behind to, to cover that up. So, we'll have to go to the butane later, sooner or later. Everything we do from now on, we're going to try to get the butane, but we have to be very strategic where we place that because you can't put the butane in, in, in your inside air handler units. You have some air handling units that are on the internal of the building. Of course, you can't put the butane in there. It has to be external. So, you're going to have to move all the air handlers outside of the building footprint.
I was hearing this in another system with the R22 and that no longer available.
No.
And they, and they are redoing.
Correct.
All new HVAC.
Right. Two of the places that we get R22, they have no, they, they don't have anymore. So, we're having to search wherever we can. The last load we got, I believe we, come from Georgia was where we found it.
We recapture as much as we can.
We try and, and exactly, to speak with Dr. D is when we replace a unit now and we go with the butane or we go with the 410, we capture as much as we can. But we have some units that are in such bad conditions that we're dumping 20 and 30 pounds in every time we go up there and there's an issue. So, we're losing our, our availability to it very fast.
Any other questions?
Where is this company from and have you worked with them before?
So, Bar Roofing out of Mooresville, and I have. I have worked with them in previous years. Bar Roofing actually did some work for Yacht Richfield many years ago. And I've worked with them in my previous district. They're very, they're a good company.
So, Mr. Benton's recommendation to us is to go with Bar Roofing at a cost of $716,100 for the replacement of the West Stanley High School roof. Do I have a motion? I move that we accept this or award the contract to Bar Roofing if they total off $716,100. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favors now? All opposed, no? Motion passes. You're still up, Mr. Benton?
Oh, yeah. I'm going to bring, I'm, I'm going to bring Sean up, Mr. Brit for this. We worked together on a, on moving the knock unit from, from our office now to his office where our IT is centrally located and it needs to get there. And Sean worked with a lot on it. So, I'm going to let Sean present it to you.
So, I'll give you a preface. You guys were going to do this years and years and years ago and the racks were set up and everything for whatever reason. I don't, I don't think all the history is necessary, but.
I'm going to give it to Mr. Brit and I'll be right here if y'all don't.
A main reason for that is right now, your network operations centers and building, you don't even know it. And it needs to be moved and it needs to be moved to a place, especially it would be nice if it's close to Sean and you can get emergency help. Another thing that we're going to talk about too is the need for a new generator. And even though we're moving it now, the new generator, generator we have needs to be replaced in any way because it's not even firing all the time. So, just a little background.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis, Madam Chair, members of the board. And Terry, I was going to tell you, every time we, I've done three requests for funding in nine years and I've always followed the auditor. So, we need to reschedule, well, I don't have to follow the auditors anymore. So, but this is Dr. Dennis alluded to. We had started some years ago, setting up a network operations center. What that is, is where all your fiber connections, all your internet traffic comes back through one area. And we have long wanted it at our tech site. We began prepping some years ago. And then this year, at the beginning of July, began that process. And it's probably been the biggest project I'll ever work on, along with my staff, with all the fiber connections, everything coming back. That's already been completed. Much of the work has been done, thanks to the vendors who I've partnered with. And fortunately, much of that's been done and covered through our E-rate funding. So, that's really helped us a great, a great bit. But the most important part of any network operations center is redundancy and also to make sure your, your network is always. and also to make sure your, your network is always up. We take a lot of pride that I don't think in the past year, we've had a, a district not planned outage at all. Because I think we've come to an age where everything, from the way you unlock the doors, to the way in which you turn on the HVAC system, to your camera systems, to your intercom, your phones, and your internet traffic, all comes through a network. We probably on a given timeframe have about 20,000 devices connected, and they have to stay connected. And part of that is to make sure that in the event of a local power outage, say at our NOC, our area NOC, it doesn't impact all 24 sites. That in that event, the generator with the battery backups we have in place will kick on and sustain that network traffic so that even though our power is out, it doesn't impact every school in the district, which would have a huge impact, given the way the environment is set up in today's age. So with that being said, we've, uh, I got with Keith, who's more the electrical side of it, has more knowledge on that and kind of gave him a guidance of what we needed, and he contacted, I think the company was DHNH, they're at the bottom there, architect who drew up, uh, the drawings of what we would need to do, uh, to have this professionally done. The biggest part of it is being the generator backup, uh, as well. And they also took the process of soliciting, uh, sitting out bids and contacting contractors. We, we did an open bid process on the 21st, I think it was, I was at your office. We had one candidate submit, uh, a proposal, and that proposal, what's on there? And that's where we would need your approval to move forward so we can begin the process of finalizing this project that we've been working on since, uh, July. Any questions?
Can you tell me what percentage of that $95,500, I know you said part of that is the generator?
$36,000, I think, is the cost of the generator, yes.
And one thing too is when we're looking at the North Alamo location, which in your office to put it, we're also having to go through three stories of, of three levels to be able to get everything connected.
Yeah. A lot of the cost too is the electrical side, making sure it's up to the specifications you need. Um, you just can't plug these things into, you know, your regular outlet, you have to make sure they're up to specs and they can meet the, uh, the more complex part about voltage and stuff, that it, it requires some changes there too that they'll be doing. And running a gas line as well. Gas is important, the natural gas, because, you know, in the event, you want to have sustained source of fuel to that generator in case this outage goes on for hours. You know, you don't want to have a generator that you have to keep filling up with gas, or like gasoline, if you will, but natural gas. So that's also part of the cost as well.
Is it unusual to only have the one bid and to have the other companies do not submit?
I, I would say it, the, the complexity of this type of work is probably something that, and I could, you may want to allude to this, not something every type of electrical company would want to do. So, yeah, I mean, that would be my answer. Um, obviously, you know, they reached out to these vendors here, um, but I think a lot of it comes down to the type of complexity. So unless you want to add something else to that?
Uh, no, it's not. Um, sometimes when you do, when you do, uh, invitational bids like this, you're going to have one contractor bid on it. By looking at these bids and the individuals there, it was who could get to it the fastest, bottom line. Some of these guys, because we have a pretty quick move that we need to meet, and so some, um, you know, that, it's not unlikely. When you get into big roofing jobs like this, these guys are hungry all the time, so they, they, they go after everything. These guys get to pick and choose a lot.
And we hope to start this process after the beginning of the new year, but again, it is a complicated process with a lot of entities that have to coordinate.
Yeah, I, I've set a scheduled date of the first of January, and, and like I said, we don't want to net, we don't want to, we're going to do an outage over the weekend. So that's about the only amount of time I want that network to be down. But I want to make sure when we turn it up, it's all operational and that in case of an outage, I have backup that will keep everything up and running.
And, and I just want to add something to this. The reason why this is very important too is, is Sean's HID controls for the entire district, home card readers, open and lock, security of the building, runs through this right here. If it's down, we've got big issues. If we don't have generator backup in his office where he needs it and he can control it, we have issues.
And your phones and your intercom too run through your network as well, which is, communications are an important part of school functionality, so.
I was going to say, it would pose a safety issue without the generator backup, and so, um, for me, that's one of the highlights of, you know, having it, um, with the propane and the more secure, um, setup.
Any other questions? Okay, so your recommendation is to go, is it Hargit Electric?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is that how you pronounce that? With a bid of $95,500 for replacing the network operations center move. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the bid as presented.
Second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is Personnel and Administration, Ms. Lydia Hedrick.
Good evening, Board members. Presented to you this evening, Section 1 does not require any action on the personnel agenda, it is simply for your information. However, Section 2 does require your action in the vote, in the form of a vote of approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve the Section 2 personnel agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Superintendent comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the week of December 9th to the 15th is Computer Science Week. Sean, do you have anything special planned for that? Just asking. Uh, month is Learn a Foreign Language Month. The 2nd, uh, which was yesterday, was Special Education Day, and the 7th is the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Just a couple days, make sure you got on your calendar, December 20th is a three-hour early release. And of course, the 23rd to January 6th, we'll have no school for students due to our winter break.
Next will be Board Member Comments. Ms. Allman, I'm going to start with you. You will appreciate that one day. You may not tonight, but you will one day.
I just want to start with thanking, um, everybody that came out to just show their support. I congratulate everybody that was sworn in again. I am really looking forward to serving over the next two years. I know a lot of you guys have heard me speak about transparency and communication, and that is something that I am striving to do. And I look forward to, to doing that with you guys. The teachers, um, that were awarded tonight, um, thank you for what you do. It doesn't go unnoticed, and, um, you're very much appreciated. Thank you.
Ms. Poplin?
Um, I would just want to start out with, um, congratulations to Ms. Whitaker and Mr. Lewis for their new appointed positions after tonight. And congratulations to Ms. Allman for coming on, coming on the board, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Um, and also a thank you to Dr. Lefler, I know he can't be here tonight, but maybe he's listening to us. But thank him for his service and, um, just really appreciate the time that he had on the board. Just want to, uh, say, um, that, you know, we have some amazing staff in our county and, uh, the fact that we get to recognize those staff each month, um, is, is special. But, uh, we have some really amazing talent, and, um, Mr. Plummer, you, you and your staff, and you guys do a great job. And Ms. Hedrick also hiring those folks and, um, training them and getting them in here. And so, um, we just really appreciate all the work that they do every day. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, uh, in the next season. Thank you.
Ms. Gibson?
I also want to congratulate, um, all that, the recipient, recipients tonight, Stanley Stars, um, for, for all that they do. I think that recently we visited some schools and that was, um, always a highlight for me to get into the schools and to engage with, with students and see all the wonderful things that's happening in our schools. Congratulations to Ms. Megan Allman. I look forward to working with you on the board. And Ms. Carla Poplin, I know that she served in her role as, as Chair, and Mr. Thorson as Vice Chair, and I appreciate all that you did, um, last year. Congratulations to Ms. Whitaker and to Mr. Lewis. And, um, I look forward to, to working, um, together, um, our whole board. I do want to point out that, um, as I sat here, um, I, I really felt a sense of pride with the clean audit report. And I really do want to, um, say hats off to you, Mr. Dudley, and the financial, the finance department. And working closely, I know, with our finance committee as well and Dr. Dennis. That's, it just speaks so highly. And, and I know, I, I don't know of a single person who couldn't feel that sense of pride when that audit report was given. To Mr. Keith Benton, thank you for all you do, and we enjoy, um, visiting with you. We enjoy having you visit schools with us, and we're very proud of what's going on at Indy. We can't wait to get back out there, see some more pictures as things come along. It's exciting for us and, and for our community, our school system. And I do have to say a huge shout-out to, um, Ms. Poplin did this as well, but to Mr. Plummer, Ms. Raper. I just, I enjoyed so much that meeting yesterday and hearing that our teachers are seeing and the value and loving the, the books and the instructional materials and the students. That, you know, I, I know we're going to see some real remarkable gains with that. And I, I hope, I want to make sure that funding is there, anything that our teachers need because that is going to enable our students to learn. And, um, I'm, I'm just going to push for that. I'm going to push for that. And, um, I, I appreciate, and I truly, a huge shout-out to all of our county office staff and our teachers in our system, our staff in our system, our students and our families because we truly have, in my, in my opinion, the best. And I want to see us continue to move forward and provide the best for our teachers and our students. Everyone have a wonderful holiday, and I guess maybe we'll see each other before then. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Oh, thank you. Um, and thank you to the board for giving us a shot at leadership. I think one of the good things about this board is we work really well together. Everybody gets a chance to serve, everyone gets a chance to lead. Uh, we're all elected by the people of the county. And we all try to, to come to a decision that I think, uh, helps move us forward. Um, thank you to Mrs. Allman. I got to know her a lot better on the campaign trail this year. The prior campaign, we were head-to-head, but, uh, I think she will be a valuable asset, and I really hope that she can lead our policy committee because I think she's, she is perfect for that. That's just my personal opinion. Um, so welcome to the board. I, I think you will be a, a fresher breath there and, and a valuable opinion to help us, you know, continue to, to right the ship. Thank you to Dr. Lefler. I've known him for a very long time. Um, he's served honorably. He couldn't make it tonight, uh, but, but I hope that he does get to come back and, and see that the board appreciates his service. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I couldn't be more proud of Mr. Dudley and the Superintendent, Jacob, the Finance Department, Sarah, everyone involved for, for the clean audit. Um, you, you work on diminished resources, uh, and, and you're doing the best that you can, and it's phenomenal. Um, so, so thank you for that. Last, I'll just point out a couple things. We'll kind of get to it more as we enter budget season, but, um, the Department of Public Instruction publishes, uh, data, that's a data feed from our systems and every system in the district, 115 of them, to their, uh, to their computer systems, and every year they publish rankings on funding, both federal, state, local, combined. You can look at Capital Outlay, you can go back through about 20 years of the data. It's very easily accessible, uh, very easy to sort. Stpi.northcarolina.gov. Our local ranking has worsened to 106. In fact, according to the Department of Public Instruction, from 22, 23 school year, the local per pupil expenditure was $1,668 and change. It has been gone, had gone down, we've had some growth, has gone down to $1,562. We were 105 last year, we're 106 this year. We're in the bottom 8% in local funding. If I, we combine, according to the data here at Department of Public Instruction, if we combine local, state and federal, we rank 111th, which is in the, out of 115 districts, uh, we are in the bottom 3%. We heard Mr. Deal talk about child nutrition, um, and, and you can sort this data on the state's website, excluding that. Child nutrition works a bit like a business, except they cap your profit, I think around 2%, uh, and there's lots of rules around it. But it is profitability to the school system that goes into the per pupil expenditure, so if I exclude that, we get worse. Our local per pupil funding, uh, ranking goes from 106 to 109. And, uh, obviously, the, the state drops, uh, the, the whole ranking drops as well. So, um, I, I really hope that, you know, you've heard this board, this committee, this finance department really talk about funding. We, we have a new commissioner on the board, uh, and I, I really hope, uh, that we can all work together to try to solve some of these problems, um, that we can go after some of the state grants, so upwards of $62 million. It's a, almost a million dol, $716,000 on a roof at West Stanley that is a building that really needs to be replaced. Uh, we've got upwards of a million dollars going into Oakboro School, um, that is a facility that that, that is in dire need of replacement, and these are tax dollars, um, going out of our capital outlay funds to just put mandates on things. So, uh, there, so, so again, my thank is to the, the, the Finance Department, to, uh, Dr. Dennis for growing the fund balance. He's been advised to do that by the board, uh, by the CPA, by the auditors, to tackle these unexpected expenses like the classified pay scale coming down. Those are things that come out of local current expense, an unfunded mandate from the state that's going to tackle us between $1 to $2 million. So we've got to have the savings there in order to meet these expenses. Um, thank you.
Ms. Watson?
You're okay.
I know. Megan, we're welcoming you to this board. Robin and Dustin, congratulations. The Stanley Stars, we always have some really, really good people coming in. And Dr. Lefler, I do appreciate him being on this board and his help for us. Mr. Dudley, I'm thanking you very much for what you do and your staff. And I'm, like Robin said, when we start on our visits to other schools, I do hope that our commissioners will go with us so that they can see what we're facing, um, with these buildings. Some of them are very, very old and they need, need to be replaced. So hopefully, they'll go with us and see what's going on. And the county office, um, people that work there, from the very bottom of my heart, I thank you very much for all you do for Stanley County Schools. These people work really, really hard. I don't think people out in the community know that, uh, or don't see that. But they do, and I know they do. So I do thank them for everything that they do. And on top of that, Merry, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Mr. Thorson?
Ms. Allman will find out why it's best to be first on this thing after I, after I can start. Got a couple things to, to discuss real quick. The board doesn't need scandal, but I just accepted two huge gifts from several hundred of Stanley County's most important people. people. And when you take your ethics training, you find out you're not supposed to take anything tangible. I had lost my Christmas spirit, I'm not gonna lie to you folks. But yesterday, went to the tree lighting ceremony at Indy, and those kids just amped me right back up, let me tell you. And today, I had the distinct privilege, the honor, of attending Aquadale's Christmas presentation. They had three different grade level groups. Those kids brought it all back to me. So that's, that's the hugest, that's the hugest gift I can, I can talk about. The other thing I'm gonna close out with is, uh, a little prose. Y'all know it, but I'm a poet. 'Twas three weeks before Christmas up here on the board. My colleagues are anxious for my final word. You talk too much, is what they say. I just shrugged my shoulders and say, well, okay. Dr. Dennis is dreaming of grants and new tools to finally start building and repairing our schools. While Ms. Gibson is focused on the kids of AG, their maximum potential, we want all to see. Ms. Poplin is working both day and at night to make sure our EC children are loved and taught right. Ms. Whitaker stays busy with plans and schemes to provide decent facilities for our sweet children's dreams. Ms. Watson brings candies to her colleagues and peers, and strives every day for our children, those dears. Dustin Lisk is so busy counting our beans, trying to find the best answers for new ways and means. And Dr. Rufus Lefler has been a fighter and advocate too, to all the children of Stanley County and their families, it's true. To these crazy folks who fell victim to my prose, my wish for you all is that your Christmas glows. To the teachers and admins and incredible staffs, I hope your Christmas brings joy, love, and even some laughs. To our beautiful students far and wide, do know you are cherished, the source of our pride. To all our students, dear families and friends, our warmest Christmas, Christmas wish we heartily send. The poem got crazy, but the end is sight. Merry Christmas to all, and to all good night.
I'm gonna learn not to go after you, Mr. Thorndson.
That is the unpleasant part about going last.
Right, that's right. There's no first anymore, not for you anyway. Um, I just wanted to say, I, you know, tonight kind of made me, before I came to the meeting, to just kind of reminisce back to when I was elected to the board the first time, um, way back in the nineties. Um, I was in my early thirties. Um, it was the first time that two women had ever sat on the school board before, and myself and Jean Honeycutt were the, were the female members. Um, I was the youngest person that had ever been elected, although early thirties is, is not that young. But, um, I was green behind the ears, and I had a lot to learn. Um, I, I found this book. It's the very first thing I bought when I went to my very first school board conference, and the title of it is, When Do We Talk About the Kids? So it took me a while to realize that although you may have other conversations about other things, everything we talk about is for the kids. Um, and so, um, I've learned a lot in these past thirty years. And so, I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to be able to serve as Chair. I've never served on the board as Chair before, so it's a new experience for me. Um, but I'm looking forward to it. Um, I think we have an awesome board sitting here. Um, these people really work together. We have really pushed this past year, especially in facilities, um, to get things done. And so I'm looking forward, um, to the, to the year ahead. I think we, you know, we have a mission, and I think our mission is clear, and it's that we are here to ensure that every student receives the highest quality education. And then also, we need to make sure that they are in safe and up-to-date facilities. So I just encourage this board to just keep pushing forward. Um, I want to congratulate Ms. Watson, Mr. Thorndson, Ms. Gibson, and Ms. Poplin for their reelection. Um, and also, on behalf of the board, um, Ms. Allman, we want to just welcome you. Uh, we're excited about you being here. You know, it's always nice to have a new person, because you bring with you new experiences and new thoughts and new ideas, and we're excited for that. So, thank you. Okay, so our next, uh, board meeting is on Tuesday, January the seventh, twenty-twenty-four, here in the Jean McIntyre Room at six-fifteen PM. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.